Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 6th City Council Meeting. If we can stand and do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, roll call vote. Roll call, excuse me.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Ballinger?
Here.
I just sent a text that they can't hear online, so I don't know if there's anything you can check on that.
Sorry?
The audio on the YouTube?
There's no one on the GoTo.
He's asking about the YouTube.
The YouTube's on.
That's what I was talking about. All right, first up, the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon on a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything that we need to pull from our consent calendar tonight up here? Is there anything out in the public that you might want to pull from the consent calendar to discuss? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Staff communication and updates.
Mayor? Do you have any updates from the finance?
Just the usual. So for the end of January, the city has an ending cash balance of $23 million, 981,134. There's a few negative items on there. One, it's related to the parks, but we're waiting for a grant for it, for $182,000. We've reached out to the agency to get an update on the grant, so they're indicating it's going to take maybe 12 weeks to get. So far, we've gotten the first portion of it, which is a little bit over $4,000, so we're waiting for the rest. Fund 610, right now, it's at a negative balance of $140,000. I'm looking into that right now to see what's causing it to be in such a negative. I know it's up to date, there's been expense activities over $770,000, so I just got to see why is it in such a negative. In reviewing the financial reports for it, I noticed that there was a little bit over $1 million that was budgeted for the revenue side that we're waiting for, state of California, so I'm going to reach out to other staffs just to see kind of what the status on that, if there's any, or if we're pending revenues in the area that might address the negative balance concern. And the other third item that's in a negative balance, it's related to the transit fund grant, I meant transit fund, but in that fund, it's more of a reimbursement claim type of grant, so it's in a negative until someone, or John, our transit manager, does a draw for it.
So Pete, what's the amount of the grant for the parks that we're anticipating?
$182,000.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Mayor? How does that affect us short term? Does it put us in a short-term crunch of any kind?
No. Like, what do you mean, like?
Well, for operating, you said in the negative, you're waiting on the grant. Do we need to be worried about anything pending in the short term that would be kind of in that timeframe before we get the money, in theory, from the grant?
Yeah, no. The, I don't foresee it being any issues. Kind of like when it comes to the transit grant, even though it shows it as being in a negative, we're still paying for it. But then with that grant, where the city is awarded, I think there's the federal, there's the SCHOGO grant too, that we're just pending revenues for. It's just that the transit manager hasn't submitted the claims yet for the grant, so, but there's no, I don't see any short-term issues with it at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything from the police department?
Yes, I just got one thing. I believe Councilman Strowman had asked if my staff participate in any task force, and over the weekend, I got a call on, I got a call on Friday from Sergeant Hargreaves that Stockton's sideshow task force needed assistance because they were pending a big event in Stockton. So I directed Sergeant Hargreaves to set up some people, and we sent four officers to the task force. During that task force, there was an actual incident in Stockton, a shooting, where two people were killed. The suspect left. Stockton chased him. He barricaded himself in a house in Stockton. My staff went over there, secured the perimeter, and additionally, we're Stockton, so that's how we assisted over the weekend on that task force. Just let you know. Okay?
Thank you. Public Works?
Good evening, Council. Just want to give a couple of updates. Last council meeting, we had a pothole on Brennan that was addressed. If that comes up again, let me know. We had a hard time finding, but we did find a few, so if it comes up again, let me know. We feel like we've taken care of it, though.
Thank you.
Finally got the football signs. Charlie Dugo, we've been working with him. He's, we've had a little bit of time, but he's finally in the process of getting the football sign going, so hopefully he'll get those wrapped up here in the next few weeks, and we'll get those up. Also, baseball starts this weekend, so hopefully everybody can come out and see the kids and support that. Public Works has been working hard getting that ready through all this rain. With that being said, I just wanted to give them a quick shout-out and a great job, because of all the rain we've had since December, they've done a good job on keeping the town from not flooding and having our lift stations trip out. So they've done a tremendous job, so I just wanted to say that out into the public, and thanks for everybody's support. We've had a lot of residents out in the community offer us lunches in the middle of the night and coffee and all that, so it's been very welcoming, so we appreciate it. That's it.
Yes, I apologize. I want to give you an update on the radar trailer. It is confirmed, it's purchased, and it's chipped out today. We received confirmation it's going to be chipped out to us. Time of delivery, they haven't given us time, but it's coming from Milwaukee, so it's probably going to take a week or so to get the trailer. Nixol, we got that back going. It's on the police website, so people can sign up for the app to choose to. Okay?
So as before you, we have our monthly reports for the month of January. These include all of our department reports, which our department heads have provided some updates on, also including animal control, recreation, development services, public works, building, water, wastewater, and then your police and treasures reports. If you have any specific questions on any of those reports, please let us know, and then if not, I will go into my updates.
Questions here? Floor's yours.
Okay, I have a list going. So you may recall, and some may not recall, I want to say probably six to eight months ago, we had a city-owned property located on Main Street, also known as Santa Fe. It was a substandard 4,500 square foot lot that was originally pinpointed by the city for a future storm basin that the city determined was not needed, and so it came to council last year, essentially declared as surplus, and then put on the market for sale. It has been on the market for several months. We have not received any inquiries on it. We have touched base with the real estate office, and they are asking whether or not we'd like to extend the listing. There is no charge for that. We can leave it up for sale, or we can simply just take it off the market and hold it. The agent that we have marketing the lot also advised us that the two properties next door to it have recently gone up for sale, so she did receive a call today regarding all three lots. So it might be, and that's how it was originally owned before, was that one property owner owned all three of those lots, and then they ended up selling them off separately. And then we have the lot that we own. Two of them have gone up for sale. So I was looking for direction from council on whether or not we wanted to continue to leave this lot for sale or keep it as surplus and not advertise it, and it would just remain as a surplus item.
So this is on Santa Fe, or on Main Street slash Santa Fe?
Which a lot of people call Santa Fe, correct?
Right. And it's next to that corner piece?
Correct.
Is that where, so it's the corner piece, and then our lot, and then the other, the next lot? Or is it the corner piece itself?
It is the next lot after the corner piece. So it's a very awkward triangular-shaped lot.
Okay.
And it is substandard 4,500 square feet. That's considered substandard because it's smaller than our normal lot size of 6,000.
You said someone was interested in all three lots? Is that what you're saying?
She did receive a call today. Last week, we had talked to her about whether or not to extend it, and we let her know that we'd let, ask council for direction, but then she called today advising that the two properties next door went up for sale, and that she has received a call kind of inquiring about all three properties. But at this point, the listing is going to expire this week.
I mean, my insight would be, and obviously council, whatever you guys are thinking as well, but would be to go ahead, and if it's not costing us money to continue listing it, see what comes from it.
Sure.
That's, that would be what I would be thinking.
Are all three lots listed by the same broker, by the same company?
Yes.
I would agree also with-
Different agents, same broker.
Yeah, same broker.
I would agree also with keeping it on a listing. If it doesn't cost anything, the other two lots are up for sale, there's more traffic, there's more luck, there's more ideas going through the potential buyers with lots next door in some form or another that might trigger a sale.
Nobody's in not agreeance with that?
No.
On the market?
Yes.
Okay. Very well. Municipal Services Review. Municipal Services Review will be going before LAFCO this Thursday, March 9. I will be in attendance at that meeting along with our consultant, JB Anderson. The item before them is approval of our Municipal Services Review as well as our Sphere of Influence. Once those items are approved, I will come back to you on the March 20 meeting and ask for further direction for approval of those documents. So I just wanted to keep you on that. And LAFCO staff is recommending approval of both of those items. So unless something strange comes out of the woodworks, it should be pretty good to go. City Power Solar. At the meeting before last, we had talked about, and I provided an update on a city solar farm and information on the city trying to move forward with solar farms or projects. As you're aware, our city is located in a competitive zone, and so we have services from MID, and we also have services from PG&E. You also may be aware that PG&E is currently in a lawsuit with SSJID, pending infrastructure and services there, and that will not go to court until next year. I had reached out to SSJID and talked to their general manager about the specifics and what we were looking for project-wise, and he had indicated that currently, they're not in the position where they could look at a project right now, that if they were to move forward with winning that lawsuit, it would take a few years. They have a plan that they're moving forward with, where it would take them a few years to transfer over infrastructure and kind of get everything situated and upgraded to their standard for their system. So they said they would be open to it, but it would be a process, and they need some time to adjust for all that new infrastructure. I had also reached out to MID, our other service provider in town, and they had talked about the two types of programs that they would offer to us. One was a tariff program, and one was a procurement program. With those programs, I reached out to NG, who is the company that the city has moved forward with on projects. Our solar located here at City Hall, our water meter upgrading. Those projects were done by the city, I'd say about two or three years ago, and those have decreased our costs in terms of energy and such. And I did follow up with them and ask, you know, these programs are what's offered from MID. Would you be interested, or would your company be able to assist us with generating some type of project in conformance with these types of programs that MID is offering? And they had advised that neither one of the options made any financial sense. And when I had spoken to MID, it did kind of seem, and I'm not an expert in solar by any means, that they weren't flexible. They were limited on kilowatt per hour, they were limited on size, they had a lot of limitations. And so they had mentioned that in that tariff program, they had a 10-year contract that pays about a nickel per kilowatt hour, which they felt didn't make any sense, and it wouldn't be able to be a project that NG would be able to pencil in even if it was paying three or four times more. And then also, they had mentioned that they weren't sure how the city could participate in the procurement program that was offered by MID, because even a large company like them that specializes in those companies didn't find it worth their time to go after these opportunities, so they didn't feel like it would be the right direction for the city to go in for those projects. When I had spoken to SSJID, they also gave me the names of a few companies that they've worked with in the past and are working with on their future solar projects. I did reach out to them as well, and they had actually, another company had actually indicated to me that the CPUC had recently updated the rates concerning solar and PG&E, and that effective April 13 of this year, the rates are increasing, and they will not be offering retail price, it will only be wholesale price. And so, he said that significantly impacts all future solar projects, including residential as well as governmental and projects moving forward, that essentially those rates are being addressed so that large utility companies like PGA and MID would essentially become the one doing projects. He had indicated that utility companies don't make monies off of rates so much as they make money off of projects. And so they haven't been doing these projects because other companies are doing them, and they need to have more projects to make more rates. And so essentially, you said it would, at that end, and this was kind of where everybody leaded to, or led to when they were talking about projects, is that solar projects at this point in time are a feel-good, I'm doing something good for the environment, kind of like a bragging right was the term that they used with me, which was strange. But that's essentially where I've gotten from here, was that if we did move something forward with SSJID in a few years, it's going to be something where we might not benefit financially from it, but customers that pay for that utility will benefit as a whole.
It sounds like a dead end from a city standpoint before the citizens.
It does.
It would be very positive. Or do you mind explaining to the community what, like, the pros and cons of SSJID winning that case? Like, how that affects?
So they're in a lawsuit, and this is my understanding from when I'm having conversations with them. They're in a lawsuit with PG&E, and if they were to move forward and win that lawsuit with PG&E and take over infrastructure, their rates are significantly less than PG&E. And so for people who are currently on PG&E services, their rates will be lessened. They were estimating around 15% at least, possibly more. And I don't know what will change in the next year or two, or how long it takes for that to move forward when they do that transfer, but that was what they were indicating, that anybody who's currently a PG&E customer would benefit from the rates being lessened, because PG&E is the most expensive out of all the utilities that are offered in this area.
Appreciate you looking into that.
No problem. Was there anything further you guys wanted me to look at? I was kind of discouraged myself with the response.
Yeah, it is a little bit discouraging, but at least we know.
But it sounded like basically higher levels of government were getting involved, and it doesn't appear to be as financially feasible, or feasible in general, the way it was years ago.
It sounds like we should be rooting for an SSJID win, then.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that was the update on solar.
I know from a residential standpoint, so it's commonly known that if you have PG&E, then it makes sense to do solar, because obviously there's a cost savings, but for power purchase from MID, they'll tell you that it's not worth the return on investment to, if you're on the MID side of the house. So for what it's worth.
And that was my understanding as well, yeah. Next item, some exciting news regarding, well, somewhat exciting, I don't want to get too many things moving here, but yeah. Regarding senior housing, one of the developers that we had spoken to last year, CCH, is interested in, they submitted a request for proposal to our request for proposal for senior housing. It was not in accordance with what our RFP said, but they had inquired and told, and advised that they were interested in submitting even though there were some things in the proposal that they weren't able to provide, and I just simply asked them to submit what they are able to do, just so that we can take a look and see. And so I have them tentatively, or I do have them scheduled for our next meeting, March 20, for a presentation on that RFP as well as on their company. I will reach out to the Senior Fund Bunch and other groups that I'm aware of in case they want to come to the presentation. It's, at this point in time, it's just a presentation. They're going to give some background on their company, feedback and information, history on what they work on project-wise, and then go over the types of projects that they could potentially bring to the city. And this project is potentially located on our property on Escalon Belota. And so I'll be, they'll be here at the next meeting for that presentation. And then Liberty Business Park. We received, what we did was send out a survey, which I conveniently... So we received four responses. Two responses were from the properties that we are aware are moving forward or are interested in moving forward regarding, there's a property, the 38 acres, that was recently sold that the city entered into an agreement with regarding septic and well water, use of well water. And the other parcel was the 12-acre parcel along Brennan, who are obviously both interested in moving forward with development, infrastructure being the largest concern. We did receive two additional responses. What we did was send out a survey asking, you know, if this, if we were able to put utilities in, when would you develop your property? Are you interested in developing your property? One of them marked unknown on everything, and just said they're not sure what to move forward with, and that they currently reside on the property or live there. And the second one was interested, maybe interested in selling the property if the right price was offered, but then did indicate that they would want to maintain or keep one and a half acres for the house that's currently located on the property to continue living there. And those were the four responses that we received. I also went out and contacted companies that were recommended either by the consultant that did our Liberty Business Park plan, and they indicated that they had recommendations for companies that specialize in feasibility studies and market analysis. I've received one quote back so far, and that is regarding conducting market rate recommendations on types of businesses and how to obtain those types of businesses, reviewing of the specific plan, moving forward on conducting that type of study and how the city could move forward with something like that, and if they were to move forward, how we should go about doing that, some type of plan. And the quote there is about $12,500. And I'm still waiting back from two other companies on quotes on that. We typically like to try to get three quotes when moving forward, but that's where we're at at this point in time.
So those other, the properties that responded to you, are they the smaller properties, or are there kind of the larger properties here?
They're the smaller ones. The largest one, we did not receive a response from.
Haven't received a response at all.
Yeah, so what I was going to ask to do was to send it out again and give another deadline, if that's direction.
Yeah. From my standpoint, I don't know how everyone else thinks, but it'd be nice to get a confirmed yes or no. You know, I don't know how realistic that would be if they're ghosting you, but, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have phone numbers for most of them because the properties are undeveloped, and so we typically, you know, phone number information is usually related to a utility account, and they don't have utility accounts because there's no development on them. And so we're doing by mailing, sending out to all the properties on file and PO boxes, and waiting for a response. We do know they will receive, because we received four. We, I don't, we don't have a problem doing it again to see if we can't generate additional interest.
Think they're in trust?
And that's typically, one of the ones that did submit was in a trust where there's multiple people associated with the trust, and so when he came in, he indicated his sister was the one that received it. She didn't want to respond, so she handed it to him, and he physically came in and brought it in and gave us a verbal, and then left his phone number. That one we have. And then we just called and followed up, and that was where, like, to retain an acre and a half to continue to live on the property.
Is that property located on Brennan or Highway 120? The house, the one?
Brennan. Both of them were, like, on Brennan's side, yeah.
I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I'd like to keep pushing forward until we get a no, at least.
Yeah, and we're still waiting on additional quotes, and so I don't think there'd be any harm in that to get an idea of what another company would say about how much it would cost for some type of feasibility or market study, and then in the meantime, we can send out additional letters to those property owners.
When are you expected to get those other quotes back?
They typically take two to three weeks, so I should be getting something back this week. That's usually around the time. The company that reviewed and submitted first has worked with that consultant, and so they were very familiar with how our document looked. It was kind of familiar-looking, they were able to go through it. Other companies that I've reached out to are in different areas, and so they have to get a little bit more involved with how our plans read, do a little more reading and research on it, so.
So I think probably what should, the best course of action to do would be to, once we get the responses back and anticipate a deadline, and tell the folks that were waiting for responses back, give them a hard deadline as well as the other property owners, and then that way, you can come back to council and say, okay, here's a hard deadline, we received these proposals, we've received these responses, and then that would inform the council across the board if we, how we move forward collectively.
Is that fine with everyone?
Okay with that, yeah.
Anything else?
One more attempt to ask them about it, yeah. Lack of responses, I know, is the way I see it. If they're not that interested to even respond, it's concerning if they want to develop or not.
And then I'll bring back any additional quotes that we receive as well, to report out on those as well. Right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any other updates?
No, that is all.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move to matters presented from the audience, then. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is at the discretionary decision made by the mayor. So who out there in the audience would like to come up and speak tonight? Anybody?
Yes, it's concerning the video feed for the YouTube of watching this meeting. Is it possible to pull that, show what's on YouTube right now up on the screen? I think you showed it earlier before the meeting started. That's not a very good view. Well, thank everybody who would turn in, turns in to see the council doing what they do.
Okay, so you're talking about picture?
Picture.
Sure. Yeah, we have, we're, we can adjust that. We're looking at getting a new camera to put right here in the center so that it can focus on the council specifically.
Because I don't think, they care about who's in the audience.
Yeah.
They care about who's at the podium and the council. And from the looks of it, the last couple of weeks, or last couple of meetings, somebody might be speaking, but because of the distance, you can't tell who it is. And the view from that camera, the best you can see of the council is Councilman Engel's hands every now and then because of, it's like this. So I think, yeah. I think that for everyone watching, they said they'd like to see the council here, this way. We can see who's talking, see who's scoffing, laughing, whatever. But your physical response is part of viewing the meeting. Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
I would like to get up. My name's Viddy Bennett, so I would like to get up and give Justin a little pat on the back for working with me on their Brennan with our development out there. I've had several people come up that don't even live in our development and say how nice that looks out there now. I don't know who these people are, but they just come up at the fund bench or at church. So I tell them, it's not only me, it was you working with me, and you going after Grover and following up and making sure they did the job.
Thank you.
I don't want to just be complaining all the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, mayor, staff.
Yes.
Question I have for the staff is, do we have a legitimate plan for Liberty Park? Is there a drawing or a plan or a blueprint or any of the above?
We have the specific plan, which has conceptual drawings in it.
Conceptual, but nothing done through an architect or an engineer?
No.
So it's kind of hard to move forward when you haven't got those types of things in place. So my question is, when do you think we'll ever do that?
I mean, the way the specific plan is currently drafted, that was something between property owners. And so if council directs us to move forward with doing some type of drawing like that, we can. But right now, it's all conceptual.
Generally speaking, we can't move forward unless we have some sort of a plan that is engineered, correct?
The, the specific plan, the way it is, takes into consideration that there's multiple developers. And so that's why, that's why it's not engineered because it's, it's taken into consideration that those developers are going to either enter into development agreements with the city and work together on, on doing their projects together. Obviously, it's, it doesn't appear to be working out in that fashion. So, I mean, it's definitely something we can do.
Well, you have, you have a commercial and you have an industrial piece of land there. Neither of those are really defined in terms of a general plan or a plan for the properties. Generally speaking, before a city allows anyone to develop, they pretty much have laid out what they expect from those properties. And I don't see that in place at all. So it's kind of hard for people to move forward on it because there's no really direction.
I mean, the, the, the specific plan itself has the, the infrastructure drawings in there. It talks about sizings of lines. It shows what streets they're going down.
Okay.
Yeah, there is.
Where can that be available at?
Those are in the actual specific plan.
Where can that be?
It's, it's located on our website in the, the planning department.
So somebody can get that and show the infrastructure?
Correct, yeah, there is, they are specific to the type of utility. So there's a picture on the sewer, there's a picture on the storm, and then there's a picture on the water. And it indicates, and this, and this has come up before. The plan indicates it going down, you know, a specific street or whatnot because that's what it was envisioning, how it being built. Obviously, if there's some change in that, depending on which properties move first, we'll have to move forward with that.
Does it address the lift station?
Lift stations are included in there, yes.
Okay, what about a traffic sign, uh, traffic light? Is that involved?
Um.
At Brennan?
I can't say that I recall traffic light, but that would be subject to Caltrans approval. And so it's not to say that it wouldn't be required as a part of a project moving forward in the event that we, when projects move forward, they go through a process for site and architecture and things like that. And then they go before Planning Commission and/or council, depending on the level of project. And so at that time, the city will reach out to affected agencies, including Caltrans, and then they provide their feedback. And so at that determination, when they move forward and they say a traffic signal is required at this location, then the city would have to move forward with determining how to address, turning in that, that, doing that traffic light, which in, which in most cases, if it's attached to a project moving forward, that developer would pay for those costs, correct?
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yes, I have a question for you. The radar that you said is coming in, what is the process when you decide where that's going to go? Does it get license plate numbers or is it just supposed to be a deterrent? Or what is the plan for that? I've called many, many times in the last few weeks. The activity on First Street, the speeding, especially between the hours of four and five o'clock in the afternoon. There are three specific vehicles that enjoy racing each other on Baker Street, which I've called numerous times for. And then one gentleman whose exhaust is so loud that it rattles my house. I know that you can't do much if you don't see it, but the racing is, like, I, I asked if we could get somebody just to sit on the corner and watch. And I was told that you have to basically put in a request and there has to be a meeting and approval and all of this stuff, which was a bit shocking to me because just past my house, you know, on the next block past James, there's officers that sit there almost every afternoon with, you know, with the middle school. So i- is that the case where I have to go through some sort of formal process to get an officer to come out and pay attention or?
Well, normally what happens is you call it in, an incident gets developed, made, and then we dispatch an officer to go out there. I did give direction to my officers to spend more time on your street. However, sometimes on, between those hours that you're specific, things come up and I only have two officers working, a sergeant and officer. So they don't, they might not make it over there, but I will continue to push that. Uh, you, do you know who you spoke to? What officer you spoke to that told you you had to go through all these steps?
Uh, I have it written at home. I don't remember off the top of my head.
All, all you have to do is just call the dispatch, tell us what's going on, even if...
And I understand, it's just, it's not an emergency, you know? But it's like at midnight, literally on the dot, almost every night, there are like the three Subarus racing down Baker Street from First. They're, they're going to kill somebody, it's, you know.
I, I understand your frustration, but if you call and you give a description of the vehicles and what they look like, the color and make?
Well, I did, I gave it to the officer. He said he knows who they are. They're well-known to you guys, but they're still doing it. So I'm assuming because they didn't witness it, maybe they can't do anything. I just, you know, I, I'm just concerned because we have kids that play there and more so in the hours of four to five when people are going fifty miles an hour right past my house is what concerns me more because of the kids that are out there riding their bikes and playing. The other ones are just nuisances late at night, you know?
We understand. But, but like I said, we'll do extra patrol. I'll have my staff go out there again and, and look for those vehicles, those particulars. But you're right, if it's an infraction, we can't do nothing about it. Even if it's a misdemeanor, we can't do nothing about it unless we witness the violation.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else out there tonight? All right, seeing no other takers, we're going to go ahead and close matters presented from the audience. Move on to administrative matters. Number four, conduct nominations and appoint candidates to the vacant seats on the planning commission.
Thank you, mayor. This item was continued from the February twenty-seventh meeting. Essentially, we can go ahead and open nominations. And at that point, each council member can make a nomination or, you know, you could put a name out there and then we will move forward with doing some type of vote on that name. And then whoever receives a three, at least three votes first will become the commissioner appointed to that commission. We have two spots open on the planning commission, two separate terms. One of them expires June first of twenty twenty-four, which will be next year. And the second one expires June second of twenty twenty-five. And so I would like to go ahead and open the longer one up first, expiring June second, twenty twenty-five. And we would take any nominations for that position.
Before we talk about nominations, I just want to state one quick thing. And that is, I appreciate all six candidates applying. It shows that there is a vested interest in the city of Escalon and in the planning commission and how we move forward. And so for all six candidates, thank you again for taking the time to apply and submit your application.
And then if there is any other discussion that you guys would want to do, feel free to do so before.
Thanks, mayor. What, how do you want to conduct this?
Make a nomination. Do you have somebody you would like to put out there for the first position? I know I have somebody I would like to nominate.
You're mayor.
I think we all have probably people we'd like to see on the planning commission, so. I would like to nominate Ronnie Van Dyke. With her experience in the industry and everything, I think she'd be a good addition and a good fit for the group.
I would second that nomination.
So, uh, let's go ahead and...
Do we vote on it or do we do other?
If you have any other nominations for that position, we should do all the nominations first and then act on a vote on each one.
For the longer-term one?
Gotcha.
So this one would be for the position expiring June second of twenty twenty-five.
Well, I, I'd like to nominate Marion Van Vliet. I think we're talking about a person who understands how to deal with conflict management. Obviously has and understands the value of public service. And I could see him, with him being retired, having plenty of time to assimilate the position pretty quickly as well as ethically sit in that seat.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mike Dunbar. Being from a background where he is investigative and has an open mind where he looks into things in different points of view and has that background.
I'd second that.
Uh, I'd like to nominate Scott Anderson.
I'd second that also.
Just to be clear, we're nominating all these folks for one position, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Just want to clarify the air on that, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry. Thought it was for...
I'm just, there's like...
All the nominations in here.
But we can re-nominate. When we go to the second position, we can then nominate them for the second position, correct?
Yes, most definitely.
Okay.
All right, then...
So is that, that's all the nominations for the twenty twenty-five term?
I believe so.
We'll go ahead and close nominations.
Start at the top and work our way down, I guess.
Courtney, do you mind doing a roll call vote on the first position for Ronnie, please?
So I have Bellinger and Strowman for...
No, go ahead and just go through all the council members' names, roll call vote. We have to know the yeses and no's. So you're just going to do the attendance?
Oh.
Yeah, just go read through each of them for each one. This will be for Ronnie.
Uh, council member Strowman?
Yes.
Council member Walker? And then council member Engel?
Nay.
Mayor pro Tim Hagan?
Nay.
And then Mayor Bellinger?
And next for Marion?
And then for Marion?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Give it a turn. Okay, yes, so that one isn't appointed, sorry.
First term is appointed at this point, correct?
Ronnie has been appointed to the planning commission seat for twenty twenty-five. You want me to open up new nominations for twenty twenty-four seat? Or would you like to move forward with the ones that are already nominated?
I'm okay with the nominated currently. Is there any other names you wanted to add?
I would like you to open it up, please.
I'll stay with the, my nomination of Marion.
And I will like to nominate Mike.
I would like to nominate Kurt Danziger.
The others? I will once again nominate Scott Anderson.
Okay, so this will be for the term expiring in twenty twenty-four. And a roll call vote for Marion, please.
Council member Strowman?
Epstein.
Council member Walker?
No.
Council member Engel?
Nay.
Mayor pro Tim Hagan?
Uh, yes.
And Mayor Bellinger?
Next one will be for Mike Dunbar.
Council member Strowman?
No.
Council member Walker?
Yes.
Council member Engel?
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Hagan?
Yes.
And Mayor Bellinger?
Passed on a four-one. So that is Mike Dunbar, appointed to the planning commission for the twenty twenty-four term. So we have appointed both Ronnie and Mike to our planning commission effective today.
Congratulations.
Congrats, yes.
Congratulations, everybody.
And their first meeting is going to be when?
Next week, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay.
And, and we will have staff follow up with them tomorrow with all of the information for that. And Frank and I are also going to work on a, a training, hopefully with this next week, even if it's virtual, to, to make sure they have all of those basic things taken care of before that meeting.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, public hearing. Item number five, adopt resolution number XX twenty-three, approving the expenditure plan for the city's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, Home Investment Partnership Act or HOME program. Dominique.
Thank you, mayor. So for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the city will receive an estimated allocation of fifteen thousand ninety-six dollars in home funds. And that's the Home Investment Partnership Act program. The city proposes to use these funds for the provision of low and moderate income housing units through gap financing and rehabilitation of eligible units. The county is currently accepting applications. The home funds used in a gap financing program assist first-time low-income persons in making a down payment on a new home. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive comments from the public on projects identified by staff for this fiscal year, for twenty-three, twenty-four. It is recommended that the city commit this estimated amount of fifteen thousand ninety-six dollars of home funding for the continuation of this program with the funds split evenly between the two programs that are offered. So that would be between the gap account and the rehab account. The current levels that are in those funds, each of those accounts is about twenty-one thousand eight hundred roughly. So funds are de-obligated after not being used in three years. And so essentially, if they're not utilized, they go back to the county and are, and are proportioned out to other cities who have that need or are utilizing those monies in their programs. We have increased efforts to promote these programs. However, we have not received, we have not had a gap user for that program since two thousand ten. And we have not had anybody in town utilize the rehabilitation program since two thousand twelve. And then currently, we don't, we don't have anybody going through these processes either. And so, but we are recommending that those monies be split, as they typically have been in the past, between those two programs. And hopefully this year, we'll be able to have some people apply for these programs. So we are requesting that we open the public hearing, receive any comments, and then that council approve the expenditure plan for the HOME program.
All right, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for item number five, the HOME program. Are there any comments out in the public for this program or any questions anybody has? Say, anybody online tonight?
Do you have someone online?
Anybody online that would like to speak as well on this?
I know.
Apologies. With that, then, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item number five. Were there any questions up here at the council level for staff on this item?
Are these individuals that can apply to these programs? Or is this just for a business or an entity?
The funds themselves, my understanding, it's for residential. Yeah, first-time homebuyer program for residents as well as rehabilitation loans for anybody who income qualifies for the need for their house.
They mentioned, just out of curiosity, what the interest rate is on those low-income, low-cost loans? Now, the interest rates have started to go up.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Are they going to maintain low-interest rates on that form? It might become more, more popular.
Yeah, yeah, they're, I mean, they're typically like reasonable, around three percent is what we've seen in the past. However, it's been a long time since they've moved forward, so I'm not sure what the interest rate is on them now.
How do we advertise these programs to our constituents?
So we go through a process where we provide information on the city's Facebook page. We upload things on our website. We also post notices. And then we send out mailers to nonprofits that work with certain programs in town in hopes that they'll share that information with anybody that they may or may not know and have that need. And so, and then we hold a, we hold a informational meeting every year as well, which we did not have anybody in attendance to. And then people do contact the county directly because most of these types of programs are typically ran...
typically ran by counties, sometimes in other areas. And so, if somebody does contact San Joaquin County, either through Fair Housing or other types of departments, and they're expressing this type of need, rehabilitation, and they say they're from Escalon, they're forwarded to the representative in the county that handles our program, to see if they qualify. And then we have a page on our website that supports this program.
Is it like an application kind of thing, or you have to come in and interview for it? Both of us?
Yeah, they would do an interview and an application process.
Okay.
One clarifying quick question. I don't know if you know this or not, but is this something that we could, I know that some of the folks at Almond Grove have done some rehab work on some of their units out there, is that something that could apply on the rehab side for them, for a low-cost loan type situation, maybe?
I could definitely double-check on that.
Find out for us on that, maybe?
Good idea.
I'm just thinking, maybe we might be able to find a home for that money?
That's good.
If we haven't been using it for a few years, or a decade.
Staff, I would make a request that you pass this along to the Fund Bunch as well.
Okay.
Idea too.
So we'll share with Fund Bunch and Almond Grove.
Unfortunately, they're private property. The mobile homes, so we may or may not be able to go through, because they are considered private property, but...
Yeah, it would be able to look into it anyway, you know, but that would be great if that would be something that they could, yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing.
Get that information over to the residents. Through our connection.
Can't hurt asking.
Right.
Similarly, can we also include information on this on social media as well?
Sure.
I mean, if no one's using it in thirteen and eleven years, we should probably, I'm not saying staff doesn't do this, but we should probably do a blast and share the information out there as, as much as we can, to whoever we can.
So with that, then, we're gonna need to entertain a motion on this to adopt, correct?
I'll motion to approve the resolution for the home program for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five-oh. Uh, next, moving on item number six, adopt resolution number XX23, approving the expenditure plan for the city's fiscal year 2324, Community Development Block Grant Program. Back to you, Dominique.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG, we receive an allocation of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars on an annual basis from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, through an agreement with San Joaquin County. HUD requires that citizen participation in program selection process, which involves providing residents with notice of availability of funds. And we posted notices at City Hall and on the website, we've sent out mailers to the local nonprofits at town that provide programs and services in the community, inviting them to apply, and also attend the informational meeting, which we held on January third. In past years, all of the applications for CDBG funds were received directly by the city. San Joaquin County had recently revised that program, so that the service groups that serve the entire county, but have programs in cities, submit one application for funds to the county only, instead of applying individually to each city. And that single application, service groups then list their funding requests for each city. This has streamlined the process for the county, since they process reimbursements countywide for countywide service groups, which include Meals on Wheels, Mobile Farmers Market, and Fair Housing. Fifteen percent of the seventy-five thousand dollar allocation, which is approximately eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, can be used towards the assistance of service groups. The county has informed the city that they've received application, requesting funding from the city of Escalon, from Fair Housing, Mobile Farmers Market, and HSA, which is the Human Services Agency. These programs support Escalon residents, either directly or indirectly. The funds requested by the service groups this year totaled more than eleven thousand two hundred and fifty that the city can offer. The city is also submitting one application to recoup the administration costs of operating the CDBG grant program. This public hearing is to receive comments from the public on these applications that were received for the fiscal year twenty-three, 2023, 24, and for the city council to consider approving the funding as recommended. So, under organizations requesting service funds, there's three service groups that submitted complete funding requests. The first one was Fair Housing, they requested a thousand dollars be allocated to the Community Housing Resource Board to continue the city's contribution to provide fair housing services to low, moderate income persons. This is the same amount that was allocated as last year. This program meets the HUD's national objective of addressing the needs of low and moderate income persons. The program services are provided to the community free of charge. San Joaquin Fair Housing's mission is to ensure that all members of the community have equal access to safe, affordable housing and to eliminate any discrimination of housing. Staff refers residents with landlord and tenant laws and rights questions to Fair Housing. This portion of the CDBG funds will be managed by San Joaquin Fair Housing Foundation. In the current fiscal year to date, Fair Housing has assisted one hundred and sixty-seven residents with a total households, household size of five hundred and fifty-five people. The second organization requesting funding is HSA. The Human Services Agency is requesting forty-five hundred dollars to support their Meals on Wheels program for the city of Escalon. Meals on Wheels delivers meals to homebound seniors ages sixty-plus. The funds requested will be spent on the purchase of meals, which is five frozen meals, along with fresh fruit and milk, delivered once a week to seniors' homes. Council approved similar requests over the last few years. Although not requesting CDBG funding for it this year, HSA will continue to provide meals to non-homebound seniors at the Escalon congregate site at the community center senior room. And the third organization is the Emergency Food Bank and Family Services of Stockton slash San Joaquin, requesting seventy-six hundred eighty-nine dollars be allocated to their Mobile Farmers Market program. This request is larger than previous years, as the applicant cited increased costs for produce, gas, as well as staffing over the past year. As the total allocation for the service group cannot exceed eleven thousand two hundred and fifty, staff recommends that council consider approving an award of forty-five hundred dollars. A specially-equipped mobiles, farmers market vehicle staff with a nutrition educator and assistant serve the care program once a month. They provide nutrition education through onsite cooking demonstrations, they focus on healthy food preparation, appropriate serving size, the role of diet in preventing disease and chronic health conditions, nutritional content of food items and more. Upon conclusion of this, of the presentation, participants will also receive ten to fifteen pounds of fresh produce. The monthly site visits are conducted in one-hour increments, and the program serves approximately three hundred and sixty residents a year. The city usually receives a request from the Second Harvest Food Bank to support their food assistance program, Senior Brown Bag and Food for Thought programs. Although Second Harvest did not submit an application this year, they do continue to provide the above-mentioned services here in Escalon. Staff is also applying for one city application described below, twelve hundred and fifty dollars to be allocated to administration for this fiscal year in administering this program. This funding reimburses the city for costs expended on staff time posted, advertising, and supplies related to, to moving the, the program forward for the year. The service agency applications are also available upon request for review. Regarding organizations requesting project funds for 2324, we did not receive any applications for the remaining sixty-three thousand seven fifty. That money will revert to San Joaquin County to be utilized by other jurisdiction, somewhere else in the county. That has happened to us for the last several years. The, the program itself is, is very restrictive on income requirements, and so we have a hard time utilizing that money or having somebody to be able to apply for it that meets the funding requirements. So the CDBG CARES Act funding, as a result of COVID-19, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development allocated additional monies in 2020 and 2021, under CDBG CARES Act, to local governments to assist those affected by the pandemic. The city currently has fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars to expend on CARES Act eligible activities. The current expenditure plan for these funds is to provide meals to seniors at age restricted senior housing facilities in Escalon from local Escalon restaurants. And with that, if there's any questions, we recommend opening the public hearing and taking any comment, and then approving that expenditure plan as...
Thank you so much, girl. We're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing on the CDBG program.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I see that we have, is this a new line item this year, where we have city time being requested for twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
Uh, no, we've done that maybe the last two to three years.
I would, since this isn't city money, I would ask for an accounting and an explanation of the time, and, and how the money is needed to make up, pay the city back, reimburse for time, and supplies, whatever, et cetera. And other than just a blanket, you know, we'd like twelve hundred and fifty dollars. I, I think the county might like that, to see that too, so, just thought.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online that would like to speak on that? Chase them off. Alright, with that, then, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Staff, how do we advertise this CDBG programs to our constituents?
Um, these, these programs themselves, these types of programs are, are targeted towards nonprofits that provide programs in, in town, and so they're mailed out informational notices. So, so the programs that we're aware of that are going on in town, that, that mobile food market, CARES program, those, those types of programs that are offered are mailed a direct notice.
So, I, I'm thinking of two programs, three programs, off the top of my head, here in town, namely, the Food Pantry, and the Trinity Church, and they, they recently started a meal program. And then also the Pentecostal Church and, and their, their food distribution. Did we reach out to those three programs and say, hey, we have some CDBG funds that you might be interested in? Because, I mean, at, at least in my opinion, those, and there are also nonprofits in town that could probably utilize some of these funds too, and, I mean, sixty-three thousand dollars is nothing to bat an eye at. I mean, and, or maybe even the Ministerial Association and, and their Thanksgiving meal. I mean, so, before we give the sixty-three thousand dollars back to the county, I, I, I would think that we should probably try to reach out to some of those other organizations.
So, sorry.
Apologies.
Sorry.
Didn't want to interrupt. Well, I just, I was just gonna ask, to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, are, are these deadlines closed?
They are.
Okay, so, so this is something we can't, because I, I think, is there, is, do we have a master list of these nonprofits in town?
We do. I know the Food Pantry is on there. I'm pretty confident that although the churches are listed as well, the, the one hiccup that we hear repeatedly every year, when, when it comes to CDBG program, is its income base, it's a very stringent program. And so, essentially, like, Second Food Harvest is listed, they haven't participated in the past, and it's because the restrictions are too restrictive. They've told us that in past years. You have to account for basically everybody that you're offering the, the food to. And so, depending on the type of program, you know, asking for that information to make sure that they meet the income requirements is very tedious, and so we have had a lot of people indicate, it's, it's not, it takes up too much time in order to do that process. And so, that's, that's basically what has hindered this, these monies being able to be used. Years ago, I'd probably say seven or eight years ago, there was, it was not as hard to use it, and we were able to use it, we were also able to use it citywide, where we would use it on ADA improvements throughout town on corners. And they had since removed those abilities to be able to utilize the money for things like that, because there was a presumed benefit to seniors, for those with disabilities, that if we had ADA complaint crosswalks, we'd be able to utilize those monies. And so, that's what we were spending them on. And the county had come back and said, the regulations have been updated, we can't use these monies for those types of things anymore. And so, it's moved it to here. In the past, the only other group that we've had that supplied for the monies, and that was able to qualify, was the, I think it was the Covenant Church, when they were moving forward with a project, they were looking to move forward on adding a project over at their church site for the severely disabled, and because that project was targeted for the severely disabled, and they were able to prove that, they were going to utilize those funds, and so they had actually applied and were awarded the monies in past years. However, that project, they had lost a major, a major donor to that project themselves, and were not able to move forward with it, and so it was canceled.
So, to kind of piggyback on what Mayor Pro Tem was saying, what is the application period for this?
Uh, the application period, I believe, closed the end of the month, it's usually the month of January.
I could totally see, I mean, based on my experience, I, I haven't been to Trinity Church yet, but the Thanksgiving dinner, and the Food Pantry, and the work that the Pentecostal Church is doing, you know, not, they don't ask for income levels or anything like that, and I could totally see where, because they don't ask the income levels, then they can't qualify for these funds, because these funds ask a very specific income level. So, but I think, uh, next year, if the application period is closed, I think next year we should probably reach out to some of those other...
Sure, sure, I can definitely have them, have them added to the list if they're not already on there.
A clarifying question, just so I understand this. Earlier there, on that seventy-five thousand dollars, we're only allowed to provide fifteen percent of that, correct, to these, these groups within town, the Meals on Wheels and such? So if we have more of those folks, it's just gonna spread that out, they don't have access to that sixty-three thousand dollars, because it's not a project of some sort of a building, facility or something? Is that the way I'm understanding that?
So I cannot recall what the definition is for the project. It doesn't have to be, I don't recall it being like a physical project, like a construction project. But I can, I can double-check. The fifteen percent that's advertised to those groups, those are the normal groups that have applied over the last several years to move forward with those items. So those are the typical applications that are received. Regarding the project, let's see. I don't have the specific description on what, what would constitute as a project. I can't really recall at this point in time, because we haven't had anybody apply for it in a long time.
So that's the remaining eighty-five percent, is that correct?
Correct.
Is some project?
About sixty-five thousand.
Okay. We're not sure what a project.
Um, I mean, the last one that was applied was building-related. I'm not, I'm not absolutely sure that it's specific to like a construction project, it might be...
But not to a service?
Non-construction project, but it has to be, yeah, service-oriented to low-income, or people who qualify as low-income or severely low-income.
Could we put any of the sixty-three thousand dollars towards the restroom that was just put in at the park?
No, we cannot.
But a different restroom, a different park. No, I'm, I'm...
We typically try to find projects that we would be able to, to qualify it for. I think in the past, we've been able to utilize it, we used a portion at one time as well towards the parking lot at the community center, because we were able to show that the senior program was operating there, and so they let us use a portion to go towards the, the resurfacing of the parking lot a few years ago. Do you recall any of the...
What I'm aware of is that's what I...
More recent, yeah. So that's not building-specific, but it was project-specific in, in a resurfacing.
So it's a city, so I'm just reading, fifteen percent of the seventy-five thousand allocation can be used towards the assistance of service groups. So we're saying that eighty-five percent is not towards the assistance of service groups, and I'm trying to figure out where the, who, who is the eighty-five, not service groups? So what is the other eighty-five, where does that go? Or who is eligible for that?
Um, it's, it's organizations, so it would still be those organizations if they have any projects based.
Project-based instead of...
Instead of program-based.
The food's not projects.
Yeah.
We have to make a determination on this tonight, is this time-sensitive, or can the council go and try to figure out a little bit more time, how we can spend the sixty-three thousand dollars?
We're past the deadline, I just heard, aren't we?
Uh, the application period's already closed.
It's closed, we can't do anything at this point.
Yeah.
For this year.
And just take giving money back.
Um, sometimes they're able to work with us, because it's use-based, so the county essentially holds all of the funding for the cities. There's been times where we've gone to them outside of the application period, like specific with the... Um, there's been times where we've gone to them outside of the application period, like specific with the, um, the parking lot issue, and we've told them, we have a parking lot issue, we need to, we need monies for this. There's a senior population that utilizes the community center, are you able to provide that monies? And, and if they are able to still have it, because other cities aren't also utilizing it, even if our monies were given back to the pot, if the money's available in the pot and we qualify, they really do work with us on trying to provide that to us.
Okay, so just because we say we're giving this money back, if something comes up down the line, and we feel that it, we could utilize some of these CDBG funds, then we can have that conversation?
Yes. It comes to city, city projects, yes. And we do try to deal with, uh, do that, especially when it's in relation to areas that we know we have, uh, seniors, um, utilizing.
Any other questions?
I do not.
entertain a motion at this point, if we've got one?
Sure. Uh, I will motion to adopt the resolution recommend, uh, approving the recommended expenditure plan for community development block grant funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five oh.
And I will talk to staff about, uh, making sure that all of the churches are listed on there. I'm pretty sure they're all, they're on, on there, and in the future, providing additional advertising via social media.
Alright, that moves us to the last item on the agenda, which is council communication and future agenda items. Uh, we'll start off with you, Councilman Strohman.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a couple of things I have, um, Staff, what is the, oh, wait till you're done choking.
Sorry.
Uh, what's the status of Orlando's?
Uh, so they are moving forward, so, I mean, they have an active building permit. I'm not sure specifically where they are on their building permit, but it's active and they're receiving active inspections.
Okay. Any word on when they anticipate opening? Anything like that?
They were hoping to open in January. Um, I want to say, I think they're in process right now of putting the shelving in.
Yeah, they've had some issues with contractors coming in and backing out at the last minute. Um, but talking to Orlando's, everybody's running I four C, we're probably around May. Um, they've still got the gas pumps out front, it's still installed, they've got the underground there. They're getting real close inside, but they're having an issue with people not showing up when they're supposed to be showing up. But they're very, they're, they're on them pretty good, and they're getting a lot, lot closer. They're doing a really good job too, and they're not trying to cut corners, so they're not trying to speed through the process.
Okay. Uh, before, I have a couple more items, but before I go into those items, just wanna say, um, thank you, Justin, to you and the public work staff. These storms are killer, and, and, but I know you guys are working hard and keeping up with it, so thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, uh, Chief, thanks for getting the trailer order.
No problem, sorry it took you so long.
No problem. Um, two other quick, three quick things. Um, the recent events in East Palestine, Ohio with Norfolk Southern, um, have me very concerned. And, um, I've had a conversation with staff about it, and staff has had reassurance from Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, that they're a safer railroad than what Norfolk Southern is, and, et cetera, et cetera. But if a similar incident were to happen here in Escalon, that would be completely devastating to our community. And so, um, do we have a, I'm sure with OES, we have a, a plan in place, um, for hazmat response, but just think it's, it's something that we should look at from an entire community response standpoint, not just relying solely on the county OES and California OES, because that would be so detrimental to our community. For those of you that don't know, um, back on February third nineteen, tankers, there was a train derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, on the border of Ohio and Pennsylvania, community was evacuated. Here we are, a month later, and the community is still suffering effects. There's a strong chemical smell, the, the groundwater's being contaminated, and it's turning into a major, major environmental issue. And, um, the railroad goes right through the middle of town. And I see a very similar, God forbid, something like that were to happen to Escalon, but I think we need to look at it holistically. So, um, to be, to be continued, but I think we definitely need to look into something like that. Um, the, I was approached by a constituent, um, on Sierra Street, and then I did a, a little survey, and I'm calling it Old Escalon, but it's probably not Old Escalon, but the streets of Sierra, Stanislaus, Sacramento, Brayton, San Joaquin, um, back in the nineteen fifties, when the city was established, um, the city came in and planted trees all throughout those streets, uh, shade trees. And since that time, um, these sidewalks are heaving in different locations. And some, we have seniors on those streets, and now the trees that the city planted in the nineteen fifties are creating tripping hazards, um, throughout all of those different streets. And, um, this con, this particular constituent reached out to staff, um, a couple of years ago when this issue was first brought up, and was told that there's no record of when those trees were planted, but because it falls on their property, if they're worried about a tripping hazard, it's the responsibility of the homeowner to replace the sidewalk. And the homeowner's responsibility, or the homeowner's response was, they weren't my trees. They were trees planted by the city in the nineteen fifties, and the response they were given was, we have no record of that, so therefore it's your problem homeowner. Um, so I did a little further investigation and determined that, uh, typically that was the direction that previous councils were given, um, given to staff, that is, this is technically a homeowner problem, but I wanted to throw that out to this particular council to get feedback on, is it truly a homeowner issue, or is it a city issue? Or is it the city and the homeowner working together to try to resolve this issue?
I can say, okay.
Um, go ahead.
As I say, in the three cities I've lived in, it's the homeowner's responsibility. Whether we plant a tree, or the city plants a tree, homeowner or city, it is, whether it's a city tree or not, if it's on your property, it's your responsibility to maintain the tree. If it creates a problem, that's the fun love, love and ownership problems you get to fix it. Been my experience with these questions.
Any other thoughts?
I think that this was discussed by Planning Commission within the last year or two, and I'd have to go and review to hear what Planning had to say about that plan on how we were gonna go about. Um, I think it was pulling permits. When you had pulled the permit, you were supposed to do something with the sidewalk, is that? Does Staff recollect something?
So that item was specific with requiring installation of sidewalk upon new construction. Um, so that was, that was maintained by both Planning Commission and Council for like new construction, um, new development, construction, but as far as filling in the vacant lots throughout town residentially, if you're building a new home.
Um, didn't we speak, uh, in regards to transportation funds, or some funds that we could use to help with, uh, I mean, I remember you saying that we could use those funds.
We have local transportation funds that were recently, um, approved by SJ cog for us to utilize, um, on roads and streets.
And that included sidewalks as well, right?
Correct. Sidewalks are, sidewalks in the past, um, they're very expensive, and so we were, we were given, um, through SJ cog, uh, the ability to utilize money that would typically be used for transit funds to be used on streets and roads. It was about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, but that's, that's a, it's, sidewalks are very expensive, and so past councils, um, you know, and if you look throughout the, if you look throughout the city, there's many streets that only have sidewalk on one side. There's areas of town that don't have any sidewalk, there's areas in town that have old sidewalk that needs replacement, and so the city has moved forward with when we're doing construction projects and, and updating streets. Um, you know, whether it's a repave or things like that, we're addressing the sidewalks on those streets at the same time that we're moving forward with those capital projects. We're including whatever the needs are for sidewalks and ADA requirements into those projects.
So are some of those funds available for projects like this, or?
Um, I mean, we could definitely look towards utilizing that, um, in the new budget. We can put that in there as something to, to look into. It can be, it can be utilized.
Thank you.
And with all due respect, Mayor, um, I completely understand that. Um, this, this particular resident said that she wasn't even given a choice in the fifties when, when the trees came in, she was just basically told, you're getting this tree, and now this tree's created a problem for her sixty years later, seventy years later, and she's like, I didn't even want the tree in the first place, so, just something to consider. I don't wanna ramble on tonight, so I just have one last item, and that is, um, our friends at Caltrans. So, last fall, it was brought up, um, doing a traffic study with Caltrans. Um, residents on the west side of town, um, brought up a concern, and the previous council, um, noted to send a letter to Caltrans, um, informing them of this. So Caltrans came and did the traffic study after the recent accident, but, um, Caltrans is not going to release the results of that traffic study until after that case. There's pending litigation regarding that case. And so Caltrans isn't releasing any of the information to the city until the go, that case goes through the court system. That's at the intersection of Brennan and one twenty. Then, everybody knows the wonderful job that Caltrans did with the chip seal through town, which is creating a headache, and many of our residents aren't in favor of that. Then the next thing that our friends at Caltrans have done is the lighted crosswalk at Elizabeth and one twenty. Uh, so I've talked to staff about that, and, Justin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, I'm, I believe that that lighted crosswalk was not in compliance with Caltrans, so when they came in to do the chip seal, they explained to the city that we're tearing out that lighted crosswalk, but because it's not in compliance, we're not gonna restore it. So there are.
That's not true.
Okay. So is Caltrans going to restore that lighted crosswalk?
No, the lighted crosswalk got taken out because the brand and that was in there was discontinued.
Okay.
So in order to put one back, you'd have to go with a whole new cro, um, type of crosswalk. Caltrans is not a fan of in pavement crossings. And then we went through a project not too long ago, I wanna say maybe five, six years ago, where we did the solar, um, lighting crosswalks, where we installed by the schools down on one twenty, and then we also installed it there at Elizabeth. Um, so at the time, it was council's, uh, direction to, to go with those crosswalks, which are, in my opinion, I like better for my staff, safer to work on, not out in the street. Um, they are more visible, but I'm not a fan of them personally.
Okay.
And what was in there was discontinued, so it had to come out regardless. And actually, Caltrans did us a favor, because we were actually supposed to take them out. They had told me I could leave them in. When they came through to do their project, they'd take them out for us.
Okay. So all that being said, um, there are issues related to Caltrans here within the city of Escalon. And I think if, if, we don't know when this issue is going to go on, uh, with the pending litigation, but I'm looking for council consensus to hold a, a town hall meeting with Caltrans district engineer and other Caltrans staff and our constituents, um, to be held, just to talk openly and candidly with Caltrans related to some of these issues. Not, we're not gonna get into a finger pointing contest, but it's about time we bring Caltrans to the table and talk about some of the issues that affect our city, um, as well as our residents, and see what Caltrans and the city need to do to, to make improvements along one twenty. So, I just was wanting to know if any other, of the other council members are interested, and then we can go from there. Cause nothing's moving fast with Caltrans right now, nor do I believe it to move fast at all. So, just think if anybody, anybody thinks it's a priority, or we should just let it alone.
You have a comment? I can say that I don't think whether they show up or not, they're gonna change their speed on me than they do for us. Being that, uh, it's these Caltrans and they work at their own pace. I don't think we need a city meeting, citywide meeting. Uh, I'd be more than willing to invite them to a city council meeting. I think that's our form for that. I don't think we need to make special meetings for someone to come and do a presentation or something, but knowing what they know, and they're gonna ask what they wanna talk about, I'm not sure how willing they are to wanna come and be rattled by everybody complaining about it. I'm not sure what that would resolve necessarily.
Yeah, I think, uh, like you're saying, if they came to a council meeting and then, um, you had some, um, official stances on things to address with them in this kind of forum, would probably be the best first step, in my opinion.
So at that, at that, um, Frank, if, if Caltrans were to come here and, and we have this discussion, uh, would there be an opportunity for our constituents to speak to some of those ideas? Or would it just be a presentation by Caltrans and then off they go?
No, like any other item, there could be public comment. That wouldn't be a problem. And speaking of, uh, the agenda, I think we, for this, uh, uh, for this item, it's really about figuring out if there's need for a future agenda item. Can't get into the merits of the potential discussion too much, although you, like, you know, I know you're setting up the point to why you wanted to have the meeting. Um, but if they did come at a council meeting, yes, there could be public comment. Um, and they did it in a presentation.
I, I, I could agree that, I mean, we, we could invite them to come to a council meeting if they show up. Great. If they don't show up, then look at something else. We just, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can bring them here to start the discussion. That's, that's my point. So. Any other council members? How's any, everybody think? Any ideas? We need council consensus on that.
To invite them to a meeting?
Yes.
I think you need to, under your agenda policy, add something to future agenda, as I, as I understand it.
And so what do you want on an agenda item? Just to invite Caltrans for a discussion?
Yes, to invite them to a discussion and talk about, um, I don't know if they can get into specifics related to the Brennan and one twenty, but just talk about some of the items that we're dealing with here in the city and, and open up that door. Have them come, just talk to us.
And what the requirements would be to be able to move forward with some safety features that we're looking for, maybe? That would.
I believe so, but just to start the discussion, because there are, I mean, people, people, many people have many different ideas. I mean, we've heard from a traffic signal at Brennan to some sort of improved crosswalk, to resurfacing the road, and so not necessarily have them give us a presentation on those specific items, because that's gonna take a further discussion. But to talk to them and, and address the constituents' concerns regarding the chip seal, um, the safety concerns at, at Brennan and one twenty, just to open up the dialogue. Cause from what I've heard is, Caltrans is interested in, in the new district engineer from Caltrans is interested in being in the community and, and listening to folks. That's the whole purpose. So addressing some of the safety concerns.
I mean, uh, I don't know, what, I mean, the first step I would think would be to contact them directly and find out what their willingness is to be able, you know, to come to a meeting like this, and then, uh, formulate, you know, a specific, um, topic of conversation. Um, I think that would have to be done before we actually put something on the agenda. Uh, otherwise, it, it could just be, you know, crickets.
What I can do is, is reach out, um, to our contact there, um, invite them to a council meeting, but also share with them. What I can do is, is reach out um to our contact there, um, invite them to a council meeting, but also share with them the concerns. Um, we've been in contact with like direct staff over the last several months, the staff that's out on the field and inform them of the issues. Um, that have, that have come up regarding that project. Um, you know, and obviously I didn't approve anything. Um, but we can reach, reach out to our higher contact that we've dealt with regarding um the traffic study over on Brennan and one twenty. And see if, if those complaints have reached them. Um, I'm also uh, under the awareness as, as well that there's been multiple residents that have filed complaints. Through their complaint system. Um, and so they should, if, they should be getting the complaints if, if everybody is submitting the complaints there. Uh, which would indicate to me that they, they should know what the issues are. I know that they're using pots of money. Uh, to address things. I know you've spoken to them several times about the one twenty project.
I've been in conversations weekly for about the last two months with our district ten. Caltrans is not happy with the surfacing that just happened on one twenty issue. They're fairly upset with the contractor and there is something that's going to get resolved. As far as they've come through and patching, but I do not foresee what's on the ground stand for sure.
But I, I guess that's the point of all of this, is that just making the community aware and bringing Caltrans here and having that discussion in an open forum. Where our constituents can come and just share some ideas.
I can go ahead and reach out to them and, and report back at the next meeting.
Thank you. That's it.
Want some more?
Sure, so um. I'll keep it short. Um, I just wanna say thank you to all of the Planning Commission applicants that put in for this job, this thankless job. Uh, we need community members to step up and, and um participate and um my hope is that. All the rest of four of the rest of the um applicants continue to participate in the community as citizens. We all need help. We all need to come together. We all need input. We need input while we're sitting up here and so I just hope that we can continue to work together and we, um, and I love seeing so many people in the audience on a nightly basis, so. Um, please continue to do that and I appreciate the community for um participating. Thank you. Oh, and then also I'd like to say. Thank you to um Justin. We are getting started with baseball coming up next week and I know personally that this rain is. Uh, hard to deal with in getting ready for our biggest uh participant sport of the year. Um, and what is specialized to do so, so appreciated. Um, and so thank you guys tonight.
Councilman Engle?
I have no communications at this time.
Alright, thank you. Mayor Proten?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Council member Walker had said. Uh, thank you for participating. It's, it's nice to see people. Uh, engaging their community and trying to make a difference. Um, it was a tough decision all the way around, but. Um, I think we have some, uh, some good candidates there, so I look forward to seeing what they can do. Um, as far as uh, one other thing that had been mentioned to me, um, from a constituent was um. Where we were on the status of McDonald's officially and I didn't know if you had anything on that.
Um, McDonald's will be, was continued from last year and we'll be going to Planning Commission next week.
Okay, thank you. Um, other than that, um, I hope you guys have a good rest of the week. I don't have anything else to talk about.
Thank you. Um, just real quick, again, congrats to those candidates that were approved for the planning commission. Looking forward to seeing what you can do for us. Um. The other thing, let's all hope we have some uh improved weather between now and Saturday for opening day ceremonies. Hope to see as many folks out there as possible. Uh, baseball is one of those great sports in my opinion. I love it and uh, look forward to seeing the kiddos and the parents and the coaches out there having a good time, so. Uh, with that, I guess we will adjourn the meeting and we'll see you next time. Thanks so much. I understand, it might be, yeah.